Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the July 20th, 2016 City Council Meeting. And at this time, could I have Pastor Dean Nelson come forward for the opening prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this community. We give you thanks for this civil society, for people, faithful citizens, who work at home and elsewhere to help our community prosper, and for those who help care for others. We especially pray, Heavenly Father, for police officers and for all who serve in our community, to help keep the peace, who strive to help to protect and serve our community. Give them guidance and good health, we pray, Heavenly Father. Give them courage and guidance. We give you thanks for all who labor in commerce and industry and in our community in various ways. Have mercy upon us and preserve our community, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to call to order the July 20th, 2016 City Council Meeting, and Commander Rayner, would you please lead us in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Director Maloney, roll call.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Here. Okay, would you have a quorum? Item four, consideration of approval of agenda, and I would ask that the person who makes the motion, please remove item five presentations, and we will be making that presentation at a later date, at a city council meeting in probably the next city council meeting. So if I could have a motion, please. Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda minus item B. Correction, item five.
Thank you. Mr. Feria.
I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so motion by Feria, excuse me, motion by Silveira, to approve the agenda as stated, minus item five, second by Feria. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn it off. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the city council, or at a public forum?
Hi, Rich.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Rich Green. I'm the transit manager for the bus. It's the county's transit, countywide transit system. I'm coming to, tonight, to inform you that, very long story short, we evaluated our service, and we're moving forward with converting Los Banos and Dos Palos and Gustine to a general dialer ride system, as opposed to a fixed route system. The ridership wasn't high enough to keep that going, plus we think that the way that the city is designed, we can better serve the citizens of Los Banos by being able to pick them up from wherever they are and take them to where they want to go, as opposed to trying to find a fixed route that accommodates everyone. We're hopeful that this will actually increase ridership, increase availability to transit for a lot of folks in Los Banos. We will still have the same fixed routes that go to Merced, to Dos Palos, and to Gustine through Los Banos. The two main concerns were the cost, if we're moving to dialer ride, is it similar to paratransit, which is double the cost of the fixed route? And then the next day reservations, because you have to call in advance to schedule a trip. So what we've done is we've gone to the Transit Joint Powers Authority Board and recommended that we keep the general dialer ride price the same as the fixed route price in the city of Los Banos, Dos Palos, and Gustine. So that would be $1.50 a trip, and it's actually a discount still for seniors, ADA, and veterans, as opposed to the $3 paratransit trip. With the next day reservation, we're going to dedicate a bus to be here in Los Banos all day to provide those trips, and then if we have an abundance of trips scheduled that day, we can always send another bus to accommodate that. And we will try to work in the same-day trips as we can. The only thing is that the same-day trips would be at the higher fare, the $3 fare. And then the other good thing that's coming is August 1st is we got a grant to promote transit, so for August, the month of August, we're going to have free transit. But we want to be very careful with that messaging. We want people to know that they can take trips, they can go anywhere they want to go for free during the month of August. However, we do still require that people get off the bus. It's not a mobile cooling center. It's one trip per person, per destination, so that other people have the opportunity to get on that trip. And that would go the same with dialer ride here in Los Banos. So that gives people an opportunity to try out the system for a month for free, and hopefully that'll lessen the impact, so.
So no tours of the city then, huh?
Well, that's the idea.
Okay, that's the idea.
And I have brochures on how to use the dialer ride, and I've left them here. And we will be at the community center tomorrow, handing out information, answering questions, catching the buses as they come in to try to educate the passengers on that change.
Mrs. Lewis, do you have a question?
Yes, I just have a quick question. The city's going dialer ride, and you said that we're going to have fixed routes, so does that mean the early morning routes from Los Banos to Dos Palos, for people who work for the county or the city in Merced, and college students, is still going to be available?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What was the same-day service for at the higher rate? What was that?
In order for us to be efficient, we require that you call by 5:00 the day before, so that we can schedule those trips the most efficient way possible. If we have availability, where somebody may call in and say, "I didn't make a reservation, but can I make a trip? Do you have room for me?" We will try to work them in based on what's available in the schedule, but the same day, to prevent people from not calling a day in advance, the same day would be the $3 fare. In addition to that, they can hop on the fixed route as it comes through town, at the key locations, which is the Food for Less Community Center, Hospital, Walmart, and the College.
And that's round trip for the $3?
Yes. No, that's, no, that's one-way.
One-way?
Yes.
So is this a $6 all-day riding? Is that, was that? I thought I saw that on the brochure, or not a brochure, but when we were talking, there was a $3 all-day fee, or how does that work?
Right. We are going to an all-day pass for the fixed route system, which is, it's $3 local, and it's $6 if you want to go to Merced and back. You buy one pass for $6, and you can go to Merced and back and transfer to any bus you need to transfer to, instead of using the transfer passes. That's what we're trying to get rid of.
Okay. So someone calls, and they want to go to, they're on the west end of town, and they want to go to Save Mark. And so, and they are not a senior, so that is $1.50 one-way and $1.50 the other way? Okay, so $3 round trip. Okay. And that's anytime you call for a mobile service, even if it's the same day?
No, same day would be double that.
Same day would?
Yes.
Would be double that?
Yes. It's $3 one-way, $3 back.
$3 back. But if they make a reservation the night before, it's $1.50 one-way and $1.50 the other? And then what is the senior? Is that half of the $1.50?
Yes.
Okay.
So 75 cents. So it's actually quite a big discount, because they're paying $3 now for paratransit. So seniors, ADA, and veterans are going from $3 to 75 cents.
Okay. And if they do not book in a day in advance, is it then $1.50 one-way and $1.50 back? Or is it still the three and three?
It's the $3.
Even if you're a senior or whatever?
Yeah. Any work-in is $3.
Okay. Okay. But any other way, if you do ahead of time, it's 75 or $1.50?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be sure. Thank you. Mr. Feria, I'm sorry.
I'm pleased to see this. Los Banos is about five miles long, and it, for people that don't have regular transportation, this is a big advantage. And that day, I remember back when I was in Tracy, we had dialer ride, and my father-in-law used it all the time, and so did my mother-in-law. It was very, you just, especially older people, if they're retired, they have time to make those plans a little better, and that discount, 75 cents, you can't buy gas for that, so that's very, very good. I'm very pleased to see that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So one of the things we discussed at MCAG, and Rich can talk about this a little bit, is what happens if this is too popular? That can we have added service? And that's one of the things that he mentioned, that if it becomes too popular, they'll send more buses over here. And that's not something that has to go through the MCAG board for approval, because that's just going to be within the scope and sequence. And so I'm hoping the ridership is going to improve, because when he explained this at MCAG, it sounded like a real good deal, and we're not wasting gas, we're only going, using the gas that we need to go from one place to another. So I think this is just going to be an excellent opportunity. And he's also looking into, like an Uber app, that will show where the bus is at any given time. So if someone's waiting for it, they'll see it has an ETA of one or two minutes till they get to the person that's going to pick up. But we have to, we have to ask for money from MCAG, because that is an added cost. So I'll be fair to you, Rich, that, you know, we have to, we have to do that. So it's not free, but I'm hoping that will happen, so good. Council, do you have any other questions? Anything else you want to add, Rich?
No, but if you have any questions, feel free to contact me at my office. Our information's on the brochure, if you want to grab a copy. Always happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Could you leave a few copies with us?
Stocking.
Oh, you got, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to item seven, consideration of approval agenda, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have Director Maloney.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 160190 through 160417, in the amount of $1,163,545.04. Acceptance of the fourth quarter investment report for 2015-2016. Minutes for the June 1st, 2016 City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5771, adopting a revised budget for the 2016-2017 fiscal year, as it pertains to expenditures in the Home Investment Partnership Program Fund in the amount of $2,000. City Council Resolution Number 5772, authorizing the city manager to file a Regional Surface Transportation Program Exchange Program Fund claim for fiscal year 2015-2016, in the amount of $405,763. City Council Resolution Number 5773, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Kleinfelder, Inc., for geotechnical engineering services not to exceed $95,000 for fiscal year 2016-2017. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Do I have any questions? I just have one, I just wanted to remove item E just for a quick explanation, and ask if this was the, is this the money through MCAG, Mark? Okay. Thank you. That's it. And this is for a transportation fee. This money isn't available every year, but as Mark explained to me, this money was able to, here, you talk about it.
Do you want to remove it?
Oh, yeah, well, no, no, let's remove it first. Let's just do that. Let's just remove item E, and then he can just talk about it for a minute. Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, yes, Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, I want to remove item D.
Item D. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Feria?
No, I was just, I was going to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead. Minus D and E.
Okay. I'll move to approve the consent agenda, minus items D and E.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Feria to approve the consent agenda as stated, minus item D and E for discussion, and second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go to item D first. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a short project here, but in the discussion and in the fiscal impact, it indicates that the funds, the $2,000 requested, are to be utilized to update and review the 17 current homes in a loan agreement, and that it's to be used for technical services. So I'm just asking our finance department to explain what this $2,000 is going to be used for.
So we recently had one of the people that have a loan through this program come in, and they were interested in selling their home. And at that time, we found a clause in the contract that states that it has to be sold to somebody else who qualifies, so low-income or whatever the grant standards were at that time, that we have to resell the house to a same person in that category. Well, that is not something that we're able to track, and it's not something that the state's able to monitor. So they told us, no, that should not have been in the contract in the first place, it's not necessarily for it to be there. So what we're going to do is take the 17 loans that we talked about in here and revamp them, whether we just do a little addendum to the contract saying that that section of the contract is null and void, basically. And so we do have program income money in there that's allowed for admin services, so we decided to set aside $2,000. Our estimate's a little bit lower than that, but we didn't have to come back to you more than once if we found something else that wasn't right. So that's essentially what the $2,000 is for.
Okay. And is this going to be done by your staff or by our state attorney?
This will be done by the city attorney.
Okay. All right. Okay, and just for clarification for our audience, this is previous contracts that the city applied for low-income housing loan.
Yeah, these were for first-time homebuyer assistance, and I don't remember when the program started, do you?
2005.
It was in the early 2000s, March of 2005, and the contracts were written back then, and it is a grant-funded program, so it is not city money.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, item E. Mark?
Thank you. This actually is the exchange funds that are done every year. This is the one that's done every year. And today, this amount is $405,763 to Los Banos. It's $20,000 above last year's amount. This is the one that's done every year. At the last meeting, you approved a claim form for LTF, Local Transportation Funds, for $389,000. That's the one that has only appeared once in the last five years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. But we're up $20,000 on this one?
On this one, yes, we are.
Fantastic. Okay. No other questions? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sonia. Do I have a motion to approve item D and E? Mr. Feria?
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, motion by Feria, second by Lewis, to approve items D and E. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item eight, public hearings. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration of the conditional use permit to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place for Taqueria 152, located at 1041 West Pacheco Boulevard, APN number Item 8A1, City Council Resolution Number 5774, approving conditional use permit for number 2016-12, for the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine at Taqueria 152, located at 1041 West Pacheco Boulevard. And we're going to go to Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the proposal here before you consists of a request for a type 41 alcohol license. This is for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. This facility has been operating a full-service Mexican restaurant. They are open Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They're also open Saturday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and they have been in operation since May 2016. Their operations, they are located in a building which contains multiple tenants. There's three other tenants in this building. It was previously occupied by El Rion Mercado, and at that time, that little market had a type 20 off-sale beer and wine license. So it wasn't for onsite consumption, that little market had for offsite consumption, and it did close in September of 2010. And this property does have parking that's located in the front and the rear of the building off of the alley. This is the location of the property. It's at 1041 Pacheco Boulevard. And I did want to correct, the agenda says West Pacheco, and it is just Pacheco Boulevard. To the north of this property is highway commercial zone property. There is the Little Caesar's Plaza. There's also several retail commercial units onto the east and west side of this property. And then on the south side is the alley, and then residential units off of Washington Avenue. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301, in that it is an existing facility, and no expansion is proposed at this time of the existing facility. So the census tract, it is in 23.01, and currently there are 11 on-sale licenses in use. And the nearest licenses to this project site are Segoy Rolls and Barbecue, which are to the east of this project site, as well as China Number One Buffet and Taqueria El Rodeo, all to the east of this project site. According to our municipal code, there are three general findings that the council must make in order to approve a conditional use permit. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I do want to highlight the second one that says that the proposed use of project will not be a nuisance or detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And out of all of these three general findings, this one is the most significant, and I wanted to point out for you what the findings that staff has made, and that this is that the on-sale of beer and wine will be conducted in accordance with ABC regulations, and that the project contains conditions of approval which regulate the operational characteristics of allowing the serving of alcohol. And that's pretty consistent with all of those three findings. Then the municipal code goes on to require specific criteria, specific findings for conditional use permits that are requesting alcoholic beverages. And I will highlight one of these findings, and it's this first one. It's that the proposal will not contribute to undue proliferation of such uses in an area where additional ones would be undesirable, with consideration given to the area's function and character, problems of crime and loitering, and traffic problems and capacity. And the findings that staff has made here is that the primary use of the facility is a Mexican restaurant. There are currently 11 on-sale licenses in the census tract, which stretches from all the way to the east of the city limit line, which is at Los Banos Creek, to Mercy Springs Road. And this census tract area functions primarily commercial in nature, and it's entirely consistent with a restaurant and the on-sale of serving of beer and wine. And that's all uses that are already existing within this census tract, and it's pretty compatible with the existing neighborhood. And the on-sale of beer and wine is complementary to the restaurant use that is compatible with the existing commercial uses in the area, and staff is unaware of any significant problems in the area related to crime and loitering. I won't read any of the other specific findings, but they're all listed for you in your staff report, as well as the resolution. If you have any issues with any of those findings, just let me know. The Planning Commission did review this item on June 22nd, 2016, and recommended approval of the subject conditional use permit to the city council, subject to conditions of approval. Also, the public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise and mailed to the 300-foot radius on July 8th, 2016, and as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number 5774, approving conditional use permit number 2016-12, for the use of a type 41 alcohol license at 1041 Pacheco Boulevard, also known as Taqueria 152. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here to answer any of your questions, as well as myself.
Okay. Let's find out. Council, do you have any questions at this time? All right. What I'd like to do now is open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council? Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council Resolution Number 5774? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and do I have a motion? Ms. Faria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve City Council Resolution Number 5774, and with the correction of that the location is 1041 Pacheco Boulevard, not West Pacheco Boulevard.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Silvera.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Faria to approve City Council Resolution Number 5774 with the correction of 1041 Pacheco Boulevard, not West Pacheco Boulevard. And second by Silvera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to item B. To receive public comment in consideration of accepting the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, UWMP, to be in compliance with the UWMP Act and the Water Conservation Bill of 2009. Item B1, City Council Resolution Number 5775, accepting the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And we're going to, Mark, for this?
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Tonight, our recommendation is that the city council conducts the public hearing and following consideration of any public comments that you might have or receive, adopt Resolution Number 5775, accepting the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Go over a few items here. The purpose of the Urban Water Management Plan, it's a long-term resource planning tool for water, especially for the water supply. It describes the current and the future water use that's going to be required of the city. It's a water source reliability. You have to address issues about emergency situations in this plan, and existing and planned conservation measures, which we are very on top of, as you'll see later. Okay. A little bit of the legal requirements. Originally, this was required by the Urban Water Management Planning Act of September 1983. That requires a plan for water suppliers of 3,000 or more customers or more than 3,000 acre feet. We serve 11,500 customers, and we have 6,600 acre feet. So on both of these numbers, we qualify. By the way, 6,600 acre feet is 2,150 million gallons a year, just to give you some what we're talking about. It's a lot. Senate Bill X77 was passed that required 20% water use reduction by 2020. This is the, now the meat of the whole Urban Water Management Plan, is this particular X7-7. And we have to, this has to be met by cities in order to qualify for any state water grants or loans, which we are in the process of, we have submitted for the chromium VI issue, whether we get the loans or not, at this point, we'll see. But we don't even compete, or we'll be thrown out if we don't have current Urban Water Management Plan. And since then, there's been additional bills that have redefined what has to be in the plan requirements. They have increased, these bills actually define exactly what each section should be. Our city's first Urban Water Management Plan was in 2005. We updated it in 2011, and this is the 2015 update. The planning period for this particular document is 2015 through 2035. And what was used as a plan, as a population projection, was a, is current population of 37,145, which is from the California Department of Finance, and a future 4.1% annual growth. We did public notice this in the local paper on May 20, 2016, and May 27, 2016. We had to have public notice 60 days ahead of time, and that's why it was so early. We also sent copies, notices and copies of our plan, our draft, to CCID, Central California Irrigation District, County of Merced, Merced County Farm Bureau, Las Banas Chamber of Commerce, the Las Banas School District, and the general public. It's been on the website since those dates that we published it. We've only received one comment letter, and it was this afternoon, and it was from the Merced County Farm Bureau, which I would like to summarize at the end of my presentation. The water use targets and required reductions, this is the, really, the, of all this document, this is the biggest, this is the biggest push on the whole document. Our 2015 interim urban water use target was calculated out at 188 gallons per capita per day, which is 188 gallons per every single resident. It's per person. The 220 confirmed urban water use target, which is one we have to hit in 2020, is 165 gallons per capita per day. In 2015, our actual water use was below the 220 mandate, and it was 160 gallons per capita per day. So the city has met both the interim 2015 target and the 2020 target based on 2015's actual water use, taking into account all the water conservation measures being done and the irrigation restrictions that sort, and we're only five gallons per day per capita per person above the mandate in 2020. This is one of the documents that I've mentioned in the past, sort of dictates watering schedule even more than the state's conservation efforts. This is a document that we have to stay at, 165 gallons per capita per day from 2020 on. The good thing about this one is it's per resident, so as you increase residents, of course, you get more use. Now, the conservation effort did very little in that regard. One of the items covered in here is groundwater conditions and quality. It does mention, and this is the Farm Bureau letter that I will put into record later, is one of the issues that they, is the main issue that they have. The quantity of groundwater is adequate for the next 20 years, provided you do the proper groundwater treatment, and we stay within those parameters of the 165 gallons per capita per day. The quantity is, this is a very good individual aquifer. All our studies, the Ken Smith study that was done for us in CCID, all the studies that we have looked at have said that for the next 20 years, quantity does not seem to be the issue. Quality is the issue. And as you know, our main quality one now is the chromium VI issue, and we do have a 10-year, which is now a nine-year, we're a year into it. State-approved corrective action plan, it's for the treatment of groundwater, which we are doing the Hoganis pilot study right now. To let you know, the state still hasn't approved the protocol, and I think they're a little surprised how hard the state of California is to deal with, and we told them it takes a while. But they have been running the testing. They have been doing the treatment. And as far as treating chromium, it's excellent. Either it's non-detector one or two. It's excellent. The issue is, it's taking a lot of stuff out of the water, and the filter medium is being used extremely, extremely quickly, and that's the main crux of the cost. We have to find some way not to do that, because you just can't, you can't replace the filter medium that often. It's very, very expensive. But it is, it is removing the chromium VI. The other thing that we'll be looking at is a surface water source, and that was in the water master plan a long time ago, if you can remember, it's quite a while ago. And it was off 20, 25 years, when we were actually at a higher build-out than we are now. This may kick in sooner, because we're looking at different solutions, and going deep wells is not a solution because of settlement consolidation of the soils. We don't even think the state would issue deep well permits for municipality right now because of all the settling of ground surrounding Las Banas. It's not exactly in Las Banas, because our wells don't go that deep. But anytime we go below the Corcoran level, the water that's pumped out below that, below about 300, 350 feet, it doesn't get recharged, because that clay layer prevents, it's like what we do, it's a, it's non-permeous layer, and so it prevents very slow recharging of the really deep second aquifer, which is why areas are settling around San Joaquin Valley. So we don't think that's going to be an alternative. What might be an alternative, and we're still, we're really in the very preliminary stages of this, is looking at moving the surface water source up to help with the quality issue, and that's a major, major project, but we'll have to look at that. Eventually, we will need a surface water source along with our well field, in fact, more wells. It's just a matter of getting that quality up to where it belongs. So the, part of the plan is to have a water shortage contingency plan. This is not, this is not the same as the conservation mandates, although you'll see very similar things in here. This is what happens if you have a regional power outage, what happens if you have an earthquake. This is during disasters. So this is major. Now, a lot of them do overlap, obviously, but these are major. This is, when this happens, you come before the council, you pass a resolution, and you go into this stage. So stage one is up to a 15% water supply reduction, not just will you save the water, where you don't have 15%. Some of the items that are listed, and this is on, there's a more extensive list on page 59 of the report, you limit landscaping watering hours, no potable water for wash downs, no runoff of landscape irrigation. All these things we do, and we've done them for 10, 12 years, so they've all been there. Stage two is between the 15 and up to the 30% water supply reduction. And then you do a mandatory conservation program, which we have been doing with our conservation program now, but this is a mandatory one for a different reason. Stage three is up to a 50% water supply reduction. And these are cumulative, so they build up on each other. This one is no new service connections at all, prohibited swimming pool and water feature filling at all. So at that point, when you only have 50% of your monthly peak hour demand available to you, you have to restrict your building permits, because you just don't have enough water for new buildings. The interesting thing about this, one of the things that does come up in this plan is a regional power outage. Every one of our wells has an onsite diesel generator. It's at the site. Automatic kicks in if the electricity goes off. And each of the wells also has a separate portable connection in case something mechanical happens to the one that's in place. So we have a redundancy of twice, actually, maybe that was re-done the way I said it. We actually have two. And this also is at the tank, the tank site, the 5 million gallon tank site. So the water system does have quite a bit of backup. Now, if an earthquake busts major lines and stuff, that's another issue. You can't prevent that. But we do have, for as far as the power outage issue, we do have that covered pretty The adoption and semittal process, first, we have been working on it. We've given a 16-day review period for those agencies that I had mentioned and the public. This is for the council to adopt the plan. Then what we do, we do submit the plan, not the draft plan, but the actual plan, to Department of Water Resources, the California State Library, and the County of Merced by August 1, 2016. That's kind of a tight timeline, because this plan actually should have, our other plan went out of, on July 1, it didn't exist anymore. It was, we were supposed to have this done by July 1. The issue was, a lot of the requirements of it weren't passed by the state yet. So our consultant, who did a really good job on it, and the city staff couldn't review things that we hadn't, that we didn't get approval on until the middle of July. So we were kind of stuck there. So we had to have an approved copy available to the public, and it will be on the website as the 2011 one is now. It'll be on the website under Public Work Documents, and it'll stay there. So it's there with our master plans and any other documents that people might want to look that have technical merit to them. And any amendments, we have to submit to the same agencies, the same process. We just have to directly submit them to the agencies with a 60-day notice. It's the same process that we do amend it. We didn't amend the last one at all, so hopefully we'll be okay with this one. And I do have this one letter I received from Merced County Farm Bureau this afternoon from Brienne Ramos. And I'll just go over, her main issue is, under the catastrophic supply interruption, the document states that the water level in our sub-basin, in fact, has risen since 1970, and groundwater in Las Banas area specifically has been approximately imbalanced through 2015. We follow that statement, because of large volumes of available groundwater and the fact that water levels are very stable in the sub-basin in the Las Banas area, it is anticipated that groundwater will be able to meet all water supply needs of the city for the next 20 years and beyond, even in drought periods such as a severe one-year drought experienced in 1977, the prolonged drought of 1987 to 1992. It's saying, and then their comment is, while the water table within Las Banas may be higher than other communities in Merced County, we find it hard to believe that the drought has not had an effect on these figures. And it's also saying that the Department of Water Resources has approved legislation called the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act that mandates that we belong to organizations to deal with the limited groundwater. And we will be, we will be joining those in the next few years. CCID is one of the lead agencies, and they will come to all the cities that's in their jurisdiction, and we will join this groundwater association. So their issue is the wording that we have a stable groundwater supply for 20 years. And that is based off all the reports that we've ever done and all the hydrological studies that we've had done for us. So I honor and run, read that in for record, they ask that be in the record. And that's, also, I'll go on the fiscal impact a little bit. There should be no further fiscal impact than what we have now, because we've met the goals, and we'll have to continue to meet the goals, and a lot of these are in place. So it does cost the city money, but it's money that we've been using the last five years, even more and more. So it will, we do have to continue with conservation to meet these standards. We have to continue with conservation pretty much forever. And that's one of the reasons that we have to do that. And we'll be working on that, as we always do. Any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Counsel, you have any questions at this time? Mr. Silvera?
Mark, when you figure out the gallons per capita per day, our current rate for, our actual for 2015 was 160, correct? So when you figure that, how many, how many, is that per person?
It's per person per day.
So, and then, how do you determine how many people are in a house? Is there a standard that we use? Because in my house, there's four, and in my neighbor's house, there's only two?
All you have to use is the population of the city. It's per person. It does, it doesn't say per house. It's per person. If you have 37,000 people, just 37,000 times that.
That makes complete sense. Thank you.
Other words, a lot of water.
I asked the same question of our consultant, and I'm alive, so.
Any other questions right now? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Yeah, on that same area, Mark, as we go forward to 2040, still 165 gallons per person, even though the projected population for Las Banas is going to be 100,000 people. I guess, you know, I don't know how it's figured out, but based on having rain, or no rain, or a lot of rain, I mean, how is that calculated out?
Population. It's per person. So if 100 people move in, you have 100 times 165 more that you can use. It's not, they don't freeze it on that amount. It's each person that moves in. So it's a moving target. It increases as population increases, which is very good. It's just, it's the standard that this act put into place in order to make the groundwater of the state of California survive. Now, there's nothing that says in five years from now, another act might go into place that might relieve this, but it's this point, the act says it is for as long as we're planning out at this moment.
So another act could either relieve it or restrict it even more?
It could relieve it. Restricting it pretty more, that's a pretty low number. So, but that's just an opinion. That's getting pretty down there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's go to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council Resolution Number 5775, accepting the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan?
I'm calling Las Banas. Wonder, on, I think it's page 40, Mark, you talk about, sorry, counsel. It talks about the city having to go through and upgrade the wastewater plant because of excess runoff or additional runoff from industrial. I was wondering if you could talk about what that was, how that come down?
What this, what this is, is we, we do have, the biochemical oxygen demand at the sewer plant is pretty high. We do not treat the water beyond sitting in the, in the ponds out there, and the ponds are lined with clay, this, similar clay to what's stopping the lower aquifer from being pumped. And we do have a high BOD. And eventually, down the line, the state, the state is very much against ponding of any sewer plants. It's just not done as much anymore. We're very efficient. We have a good, good system, but eventually, we will have to go into a secondary, maybe a tertiary treatment, where we actually deal with the BODs, and that's from runoff. That's from agricultural runoff, residential runoff. BODs are a normal thing that you get, and you treat them in a secondary or tertiary phase, so. And I think, you know, that's, we have, our current permit is 4 million gallons a day. Currently, we're not counting the homes that aren't built. We're below 3 million gallons a day, which is, shows a lot of conservation. We used to be 3.2, 3.3. We are, we're doing a project with the Influent Pump Station, which should increase us to 4.9. And after that, it's a matter of buying more of the land out there and putting more ponds in, and that's when it will be, I think that- in, and that's when it will be, I think that might be an issue with the state, and that's when we'll have to go into negotiations on this.
So, from my understanding, I remember like from 10 years ago, we had to budget our wastewater treatment plant for all the homes that were annexed like 15 years ago, or all the property, and then, and then the annexations that were done. So that's already taken care of, and it's in our master plan as we speak.
If you look at all the homes that are currently been approved or on tentative maps, at the current consumption level, we're at about 3.3, 3.4 million gallons, and we have a 4.0 plant, which should go up to 4.9 within about two years.
So we have capacity for growth, for industry, for, for, I mean, we have wiggle room.
We have guarded.
Guarded wiggle room, okay.
We need to watch carefully.
I'll go with that.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Freya.
Will we still run our solar bees?
Yes, the solar bees are, that's one thing in the future. The solar bees in the ponds, they are wonderful. The, they're nice. I saw the look about some of the solar bees.
Wastewater, wonderful, yes.
It's not wonderful, no. But in these ponds that they're in, usually you have to empty them and clean out the sledge. The sledge builds up. In the three ponds that the solar bees have been, and this is an added effect, three ponds of solar bees were installed, there is like six inches of sledge. They were in there, there was like five feet when they started.
Wow.
So that process alone, and the downtime for those ponds is amazing. Eventually, I would like to have the solar bees throughout the entire plant because the plant is, even the oxidation dishes are connected so much together, you can't get a state determination of treatment. They were never put in to increase the treatment, but what they seem to be doing is taking the treatment layer of a pond, which is usually one to one and a half feet, there's a layer. The rest of the pond isn't used for anything. It seems to be making that treatment layer about four to five feet, which in itself is a tremendous increase in capacity to treat. Then you just have to be able to get rid of the treated water. But that's a tremendous issue. But in order to do that, you'd have to put in solar bees around the whole plant, which is also very good for mixing. So it's not a bad solution to do that in the future. And we'll be looking into that after we do the Influent Pumps. That'd be our next capital project that we will be scheduling out.
Okay. Very good.
Would they ever permit, a new permit for any municipality to have ponds like we have?
Probably not. Probably, I don't see it. Yeah, it's the groundwater issues are really dominating right now.
Okay. But we will be able to increase to 4.9?
We have, in the past, they knew, they knew our project, they knew where we're going. They know we're building it out. It still requires some meetings.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the efficiency. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on Item 5775? Okay, I'll now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And council, do you have any other questions? And if you don't, I need a motion. Mr. Freya.
If there's no other conversation or comment, I would move to adopt Resolution Number 5775, Accepting the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5775 is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item nine, Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternates for the 2016 League of California Cities LLC Annual Conference being held October 5 through 7, 2016 in Long Beach. And Alex, are we going to you on this? Or who are we going to?
Lucy.
Oh, going to Lucy?
To designate you as the delegate and Councilmember Lewis as the alternate.
Okay. All right. I'll make that motion, if that's okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion to make the mayor, the voting delegate, and Councilmember Lewis as the alternate voting delegate.
Okay, thank you. It's been, motion's been made by the mayor, as the mayor as the voting delegate, and Councilmember Lewis as the alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Item 10, Advisory to Public Notices, Three Reports.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the first public hearing item is for Wingstop. This is a conditional use permit for a Type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. They're located at 1989 East Pacheco Boulevard, Suite K. The second public hearing item is for a cottage food operator at China Berry, 695 China Berry Court, and this is for Sarah Van Loben Sales, who will be preparing pumpkin bread out of her home and selling at a pumpkin patch in Morgan Hill. And then the third public hearing item is a transfer of a Type 21 for Save Mart, and also a new alcohol license, a Type 86 alcohol license, which as you recall, that was the same license that Walmart pulled for instructional tasting of alcohol. The new Save Mart will have that sampling available for their customers as well. So those public hearing items will be held on Wednesday, July 27th, here in the council chambers at 7:00.
Okay. Counsel, any questions at this time? Yes.
Stacy, do you have a timeline as to when they think they're going to be moving?
I do not know exactly when they're hoping to be complete. They are, they, as in the property owner and the tenant, Save Mart are working through some various stages, one of which is still securing the driveway access off of 152. They've applied for their encroachment permit with Caltrans. They're working with the Union Pacific Railroad as well for that easement, and the city is helping them with that. And then they do have both of their facade exterior permits in with the Building Department, as well as their tenant improvements for the inside for Save Mart. So it's a matter of just getting that all through, plan check through the Building Department, which the applicant is doing well with, and putting all those improvements in. I'd probably say maybe four to six months.
So then, that leads me to my next question, is they're asking for a transfer of their liquor license from their current location to the new location. Does it specifically set a date as to when that transfer would happen? Or is it possible, so if this goes through and their alcohol license gets transferred to the new location, would they still be able to sell alcohol at their old location while it's still?
No, they're going to take that license with them, and that's really an ABC term. With the city of Los Banos, the conditional use permit, it runs with the land, and that's non-transferable. So for the city, the terms of transfer, it really doesn't mean anything to us. But for ABC, it does. Because if they didn't take that license with them, they would have to buy a new license at their new location. And because they're taking their existing license with them, that leaves their old location without a license.
So I understand that part of it, but they're asking for the transfer now. If the transfer happens in, let's say, by the time it goes to planning commission and it comes to us, let's say it happens in a month from now.
Sure.
That they're not ready to open in a month from now.
So they, ABC is who triggers that process, and they'll wait for ABC. ABC will wait till they're ready.
Okay. Very good. That's all I had. Thank you.
You answered my question. It doesn't leave the old location with a license.
No, it goes with the new.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on Advisory to Public Notices? All right. Let's go on to Item 11, City Manager's Report. Alex?
Not.
Oh, it's not on? There we go.
Okay. So not a lot to report, continuing on my whirlwind meeting tour. Met with the Downtown Merchants Association Board, I think, yesterday, Chamber Board today, Rotary, was that yesterday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So continuing that, I think that's going to go on for a while, but it's nice to meet all the folks out there. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you for doing that. Citizens appreciate it. Okay. Let's go on to City Council Member Reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Freya.
Thanks, Mayor. Not much to report tonight, just remember that tonight, today makes years that we first walked on the moon. And some of us are old enough to remember watching it on TV.
Glad you didn't add to that. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. For those of you out there in the audience who are watching tonight, there is a preparation that you can purchase to put on your plants and on your lawn. It's called AquaSmart. And if you Google that, you can find it. All you need to do is aerate your lawn, put it down. It's a small granule product. It turns into a gel in the ground and holds the water in, and it has a five-year life cycle. So for those of you who are interested in saving your landscaping and contributing to eating up the carbon monoxide that we produce in our, in our area, that will be one of the ways that you can do it to keep your lawn green and your plants green. And the other thing is, I, you know, I want to say to those that are out there, that our country needs prayer, to come together and to think of each other, to try to resolve problems, not to kill each other, kill our police officers, and as well as our residents within our country. We have to find a way to live together and resolve the issues and the problems that we have. And my heart goes out to police officers in Dallas, in Baton Rouge, and various parts of our country who have lost their lives, and as well as family members who've lost their loved ones. But each time I hear this, I think about these men and women who get up every day, they have families, and not knowing whether they're going to return home at night to be with their families. So I'm very thankful for what our officers do and how they do it in our city. And my heart goes out to all of those who fight daily to keep peace in our cities, not just our police officers, but our firefighters as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay. A few items tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. God, Mrs. Silveira, I'm so sorry.
Mine was going to be really simple. I have nothing to report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I apologize. Couple items to report, again, to, to say again that free riding in August on the bus, we're going to go, on August 1st, we will go to a dial-a-ride system. So please tell everyone that that's what's happening, and it's going to be a better service for Los Banos and less expensive service. So we have brochures here, Mrs. Director Maloney has them, and if you'd like them, please, please stop by the city to get them. The Oversight Board, I'm going to call upon Sonia to talk a little bit because staff has been working very diligently. This is the closure of the old RDA. And it, there are a lot of entanglements about property that was purchased, cleanup of property, and I wanted, I wanted to talk about one specific issue tonight that I call the Chicken Coop, and it's actually a Pigeon Coop on I Street. And we have some, some news to report about what's going to happen with that old facility. Sonia?
So we just received notification from the Department of Finance that the first phase MOU between the DLA, which is the designated local authority, and the city of Los Banos, has been approved. And the first phase is basically going into the building and seeing what we need to do to demo it. So it's what hazardous materials might need to be removed, what the structure may affect, and things of that sort. So our fire chief is going to be working with the engineer to figure out all the costs associated with actually demolishing the building. And then Phase Two, we'll ask again for the DLA approval, which will eventually go up to the Department of Finance, and it'll be another contract. So we will demolish the building on behalf of the DLA and be reimbursed for those services. So hopefully, nothing has really happened too quickly in this process with the Department of Finance, but hopefully, we can get that building demolished, and we have and will be asking in the future for it to be turned into hopefully downtown parking. But again, that's something for the Department of Finance to have the ultimate decision over, so.
Well, it's good news that there's a process in place, and it's going to happen.
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Tim, you going to take Sonia with you to supervise the building, or?
Yeah.
Let's go on to our fire chief, Tim Marison, and I'd like him to talk a little bit about cooling shelters and sheltering in place for, and he has some information about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What brings delight to cooling shelter or cooling zone is a lot of people watch the Fresno news from Los Banos, and quite frequently, I would say more than 80% of the time, Fresno and that area south of us is warmer, or their predicted temperatures are warmer than what we experience here in Los Banos. So a lot of times, people watch the predicted temperature on the news, and then we start getting a lot of phone calls about, are you going to open up a cooling zone or a cooling center? So I want to go over four things as far as what the definition of each one of them are, and then tell you how we activate a cooling zone or a cooling center. So a cooling zone is just an area that's opened during normal business hours, such as the community center or our library that's located on 7th Street at the Pacheco Park. And that is a location to where if the predicted temperature in Los Banos is going to be 105 or greater for one day or two days, then we promote cooling zones. That's where people can go during the day, during normal business hours, and cool off. And we quite often have water that we secured from PG&E in the form of a grant, and snacks that we provide at those, that location. Now, a cooling center is a full-blown center where people will come and they're able to stay there for a 24-hour period. And we only activate those when the predicted temperature is 105 or greater for three consecutive days, and the overnight recovery temperature does not dip below 80 degrees. Or if we have a heat index, which is the third thing on my definitions, a heat index is a combination of temperature and humidity. If the heat index is predicted to be over 112 heat index for three consecutive days, then we'll also open up a cooling center. And then the last definition that I want to cover is a operational area, and that incorporates the entire county of Merced and the cities within Merced. So now that you understand what those are, I'll go on to tell you how we determine if we open up a zone or a center. When we see on the news that we have a prediction of the high temperatures, such as what we have today, if you look at the 5 o'clock Fresno news, they're predicting temperatures 106, 107 for almost a six to seven-day period of time, beginning Sunday. So we have a tool within our hands that allows us to do spot weather forecasts. We can draw a circle around the city of Los Banos, and it will give us forecasted temperatures for Los Banos, not Merced, or not Fresno. When we see that it's going to be over 105, our operational area activates an emergency call to where all the cities in the county get on an emergency call line with the, a number of different agencies in the county and from all the cities, as well as the Weather Service, and we go over what the predicted forecast is for Merced County. If it's predicted that it's only going to be 105, then we ask that the cooling zones are available to the people in the community from our normal business days and normal business hours, which they always are. If somebody ever wants to just stop in, no matter what the temperature is, to the community center, their doors are always open for somebody to come in there. If we decide that the temperature is going to be in excess of 105 for three days in a row, or the heat index above 112, or 112 for three days in a row, then the county, the operational area in a whole, will activate all of our cooling centers at the same time. Now, we do this on our operational area because what happened frequently is, and I'm just going to throw, let's say Dos Palos watched the Fresno news, and it was going to be 109 in Fresno for three days, so they decided to open up a cooling center. Next thing you know, the mayor for Los Banos starts getting phone calls, how come Dos Palos is doing it and Los Banos isn't? And so in order to solve that problem, we all go by the county guidelines that have been adopted in our county to determine when each activation will occur. So hopefully, that answers your questions and the questions of the community. We follow it very closely. When we do activate a center, we utilize social media, we utilize the patrol officers with the police department to make notifications along the rail corridor and other areas that we know that we have susceptible population bases that would be outside the bus. Cooling zones are cooling centers whenever they're activated. The bus actually provides free transportation to cooling centers when needed by anybody. If you get on the bus, they'll take you to the community center or the library. Hopefully, that answers all your questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. The community center is open every day from, is it 9 to 5? Mark, does that sound right?
Sounds right.
Sounds right.
Yeah, 9 to 5. And then two days a week, it's open till 6:00 PM, and one of the days would be Friday. There's a separate area that's open till 6:00 o'clock. And then also, the library is open daily as a cooling shelter if needed during the hot part of the day. So those two areas are always open five days a week, and then if we need to activate others, then we will make an announcement to let people know where it's going to be and when. Okay, and the last thing I have is, you might have noticed that 152 has a lot of spot paving going on. Caltrans, I requested through MCAG that Caltrans pave over a lot of the potholes in, not potholes, but just areas that were sinking on 152 from east to west and down. And they've done this on two or three occasions this year, and I'm very pleased with them that you'll notice that they'll cut out a bad strip for maybe 150 or 200 feet, and then they'll pave. They won't pave the whole lane, they'll fix what's wrong and then smooth it all out. So we have more of a, a better surface to drive on, and I thank Caltrans for that because they've been really up to date of fixing the problems throughout our city from east to west on 152. And so with that, I don't have anything else, unless council members, if you have anything else. If not, I will adjourn the meeting at, oh, I forget, let me get that right now. It says we're adjourning to Item 13, adjourning to 4:00 PM, Monday, July 25th, 2016, to hold a public hearing and consider a general plan amendment that would update the housing element of the Los Banos General Plan pursuant to state law being held at the City Hall, Council Chambers, 520 J Street, Los Banos, California. So it'll be adjourned to 4:00 PM, Monday, July 25th, here at the council chambers. Yeah, we'll get that now. And so, if I could have a motion to approve that? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adjourned meeting to Monday, the 25th of July, for the housing element at 4:00 PM.
Mr. Freya?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to approve the adjournment to 4:00 PM, Monday, July 25th, here at the City Council Chambers, is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Meeting adjourned at 8:08.